The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
And welcome to the Exeter Planning Board Meeting of August 11th, 2022. Another extent of welcome to all the fine people in the chairs. They don't get heated up all the time, and it's really a pleasure because here is one fine gang, I mean to tell you. Thank you so much for spending your time. Okay, and also while I have the floor, I'm going to introduce Dan Chenard, who's joined the board as an alternate.
Shartran.
We're not going to take any actions except for our minutes.
So the last name is pronounced Shartran.
Right.
Shartran.
So that's good. We have now two alternates, and always room for more. So any of you retire or want before retire, come on down? Let's start off with introductions. I'm Langdon Plumb, I'm Chair of the Planning Board, and I yield to my left.
John Gruder.
Nancy Belangio, Select Board Representative.
And Jen?
Jen Martel.
And?
Dan Shartran, alternate.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, Dave just told me that Willie Creek is asked.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Nope.
No, that's next meeting.
Yeah.
But it's not on this meeting.
All right, we'll mention it later on.
No, no, no need to mention it tonight at all.
All right. Then we have a public hearing this evening on the 2023 Capital Improvement Program, better known as the CIP. Projects as represented by the town departments, copies of the frozen documents will be available in the planning office prior to this meeting, and they'll be available after this meeting. So I will turn the chair over to Dave to give us a little... Oh, excuse me, we have minutes to prove. Minutes of July 14th. I'm a little rusty because we haven't had our regular meetings on a regular basis because we didn't have any regular business to conduct. All right, so we have four people here, and these are the draft minutes of July 14th. Anybody have any comments? Or invitations you want to table till we have more people here?
Can we table them, please?
Okay.
Sure.
I'll respect that. Let's have a motion, please.
I move to table the meeting minutes of the draft meeting minutes of July 14th, 2022.
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, thank you very much. Now moving right along. Mr. Dave Sharples, you have the floor. Please step to the microphone, introduce yourselves so that our viewers at home can see what's going on.
Dave Sharples, Town Planner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here tonight for the first public hearing on the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP. And just briefly, the CIP identifies the significant capital needs of the town and indicates how these improvements might be funded over a six-year period. So we're in review of the 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvement Program, and by statute, it's the Planning Board that has the authority jurisdiction over this program, and you adopt it, and then it moves forward, and I'll tell you where it goes in a minute. The Capital Improvement Program provides a bunch of benefits. I'm sure preaching to the choir here, but for the listening public, the guiding principles of a CIP are to preserve and improve town-owned infrastructure through proper public facility planning, construction, rehabilitation, and maintenance; to maximize the useful life of capital improvements by scheduling major renovations and modifications at the appropriate time in the lifecycle of the facility; to identify and examine current and future infrastructure needs and establish priorities among projects so available resources are used to the town's best advantage; to improve financial planning by comparing needs with resources, estimating future bond issues as required; and identifying potential fiscal implications to Exeter's taxpayers and ratepayers; to provide a forward-looking planning tool for the purpose of contributing to the creation of a stable property tax rate; also to aid the town elected officials, appointed committees, department heads, in the prioritization, coordination, and sequence of various municipal improvements; and also, lastly, to inform residents, business owners, and developers of needed and planning improvements. It's just a great planning tool, short, midterm, you know, out six years of what we're facing, and it helps various boards, committees. So from here, it will go the Planning Board. The next meeting is the second public hearing that you'll have on August 25th at 6:30. Encourage anyone that we have these two meetings because if anyone watches this meeting and has an interest in public comment, we do a public comment period starting at 6:30 at the next meeting, and then the board is in the position to potentially take action and adopt the plan. And from there, we'll move on to the Budget Review Committee, who will review the requested items, particularly with a particular focus on the 2023 requests, and then those will get passed on, that recommendation will get passed on to the Select Board, who ultimately will decide what goes on a warrant, what projects goes on the warrant for the voters, and then the ones that do, the voters will choose if the project moves forward. So tonight, we have the department heads, all are here, and others, the town of Genoa Water Sewer Maintenance Supervisor, Highway Foreman from DPW is also here. They will present their requests to you tonight, and I would suggest asking questions at any time or after, you know, each of the presentations, I think is beneficial. And they usually, you know, focus at least on the 2023, you know, requests, really highlight those, but I also ask them to highlight any future year projects as well that they want the board to be aware of. But it's the entire document you are, you will be adopting, as you do every year, so every, everything's on the table, but we don't focus a lot on vehicles and so forth. I mean, it's a great place for vehicles to be because it's kind of a, keeps it on the forefront and is a good planning tool and people looking at it of fleet management, but we generally don't spend a lot of time on, you know, in the weeds on vehicles with the planning board, but we certainly can do that should the board have any questions. So without that, I'll pass it on to the first. Police is going to speak first about their facility, Fire will speak, Recreation, the folks from DPW, myself, and then Melissa Roy, the Assistant Town Manager, will finish off with a review of the financial schedules. So pass it to Chief Pullen, you. Yeah, pass it to Chief Pullen, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. I think it would be appropriate just to update on last year's CIP. The Police Department had asked for body camera funding, and I'm happy to announce that thanks to Senator Shaheen, that entire project is going to be fully funded, and thanks to our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy, and also Rustine for helping on that. So that's a good thing. So for this year, we've put the new police complex on the CIP. We are currently in a 41-year-old building, which has been consistently changed and retrofitted to best fit our needs over the last several decades. It's apparent from looking at the original floor plans and comparing to what we have now that a lot of effort went into making this the best that we can as we grew, as the town grew, and as policing procedures changed over the last four decades, but it's not adequate today. With the help of Exeter TV, we created a video walkthrough of our whole police department, so I would urge you, if you haven't seen that yet, you can go onto the Town Planning website, and he'll have a link for that there. It doesn't take long, I assure you, but you'll get a good view, if you haven't been in there before, you'll get a good view of the hallways, the office spaces, all our operations and things like that. We are now at the point of simply having used up all of our available space or lack functional necessities which are impacting several important high liability areas of policing. These high liability areas affect the personnel of the department as well as the citizens we interact with. Municipal Resources, Inc., or MRI, conducted an independent review of our spatial needs. The MRI report looked at our situation regarding current best practices, recommendations from the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and clear accreditation standards. The report does not get into ADA deficiencies of the building, as there is a separate ADA study performed several years ago for the town, which included the public safety complex and its shortcomings. One of the main deficiencies is the inability for a person who has any type of health issues or physical issues climbing stairs to visit the second floor, which consists of the administrative offices, the detectives' offices, our office manager, the prosecutor's office, and our only private and discreet interview room. The MRI's report's conclusion stated, quote, "Generally, despite the publicly facing professional appearance of the external areas of the Exeter Police Facility, observation of the current state of the facility at 20 Court Street reveals that nearly every workspace is overcrowded, whether by personnel or storage of agency-owned property. Security and safety of employees and visitors to the Exeter Police Department is not assured within the current structure. Compliance with imposed regulations and best practices associated with victim witness privacy, juvenile operations, evidence and property storage, records maintenance, and prisoner handling in the current structure is not assured." Where we are today, we're currently at the conceptual level with regards to a layout and cost estimating for a new public police department with an attached fire substation at 6 Continental Drive. We've been working diligently to ensure the best for the taxpayers while still addressing the needs and issues. We've had several meetings with the architects and the town planner in which we've responsibly trimmed square footage. Our hope is to present something that is able to get onto the warrant for Article 2023 and be palatable to the citizens.
Questions?
I don't have any at the moment because I've been through it, but I will stress what Chief Pullen said about watching the Exeter TV video. How he described it is wonderful, but the video, the optics will really hit home, I believe, on our needs for something there.
So that become, your building now becomes fire-only? Is that it? Fire department, that would be their main station?
Yes.
And as I recall, we were supposed to be doing a study to see, a feasibility study to see if we needed a second station, fire station? Because you said, I think you're going to have a substation there, does that mean that?
Yes.
We decided we needed one?
Yeah, there was, there was several studies, I think in, correct me if I'm wrong on the dates, but 2001, 2007, and 2020.
Well, yeah, we talked about this last year and the year before, but I don't.
Yeah, it was 2001, 2007, 2020, all discussed a second station, weren't even discussed a third, but they were, I believe unanimous in the need for a second station, and most recently, the CPSM study in 2020. And we brought it, we also, when we were deciding, when we were working through the project about the 6 Continental Drive and what to put there, one of those decisions was, was, you know, should we pursue a fire substation? And we went to the Select Board, oh, a couple months ago now, I guess, and, and they were, they directed us to move forward with a police slash fire substation at 6 Continental.
And are we at the point yet, knowing how much renovation needs to be done to the existing station?
We are not, we're still working on those.
Okay, but something will need to be done, probably, right?
Something will need to be done.
Yeah, we're working on, we have several options we're working on at 20 Court Street, and one has already been pretty much done, is the, like a complete renovation to really bring it up and meet today's programming needs for now and into the future, for, you know, foreseeable future. We've done that, raised the building and build new, they've looked at that, and they're looking at a kind of a minor renovation option that they're working on now, so we haven't gotten numbers on those yet, but I do expect those next week, and we'll be going to the Planning Board on the 22nd to present those findings at that time.
The Select Board, Select Board, did I say?
Thank you.
Good, thank you. That's very helpful.
Jen, any questions?
None right now.
How about you, my friend?
You're welcome.
The main questions I would have is, appreciate the thoroughness you're going through, and appreciate the outdatedness of the building. We all get that way, because things happen, so thank you very much for attending this evening.
Thank you all.
Up to Dave.
Thank you.
That's all we have. That's it?
That's it.
Yes, you're up. Good evening, thank you, folks. Eric Gukin, your Fire Chief, and we're going to follow the PD, and we had much the same information, so I'll try to pick apart the pieces that'll be most pertinent. We too share the public safety complex at 20 Court Street. We did as well create a video kind of walkthrough. Bob Glowackey was immensely helpful and cut and pasted a talkover, if you will, or a voiceover of that. I think it would be very informative if people were to kind of log in and see that. One thing that it pointed out at the current complex, so both PD and Fire, is that the building is too small for our current needs. We have equipment that amounts to tens of thousands, one could even argue hundreds of thousands of dollars parking outside, weathering all winter, prematurely aging and becoming problematic to maintain, and trying to get that all under, undercover so we protect the town's property is difficult to your end. Mr. Gruder, I think what has come of the last nine months-ish of planning with the La Valley Brenzinger architects is no matter what version of the current public safety complex, with or without the PD, it's not large enough to even fit the fire department. And I've kind of said in jest, tongue-in-cheek, I can't park fire apparatus on the second floor of the PD. So even though the square footage looks like it fits our program, it's not the square footage we need. We need to find someplace to build larger, more adequate apparatus bayers for trucks that are bigger. We made a comment that the ladder truck the town paid just south of a million dollars for struck the building late 2020, caused significant damage to the door in the building and almost $27,000 of damage to the truck. And in my line of work, we say if it's predictable, it's preventable. I predict it'll hit the building again because the bay is inappropriate, it's too small. So it's that kind of thing that's leading us to some of the decisions we're making. We did a public session at the Town Hall, David, three months ago-ish, hoping for input. And I know a lot of the Select Board members, a lot of the Budget Committee members, and perhaps some of yourself as well. We covered a lot of topics on why the PD would fit well on Continental Drive because of the community policing, we could have a presence downtown, a significant presence downtown still, why 6 Continental Drive works for us as a substation covering the northern and western part of Exeter that's currently underserved. It takes us between 12 and 13 minutes to get from downtown to the high school, where about 1,500 students are there every day. We have to pass through the rail line. There are 12 trains daily that use that rail line, not even counting the freights. We pass through two school zones, we have to get through congested downtown, all that contributes to delays in that part of town. So when all these studies took place, the most recent, the CPSM study, they took all that into account, and by virtue of seemingly moving forward with a plan to relocate the police department, it seemed to make fiscal sense to include the alternative of the ability to tag a substation along with that. There's economies to scale, we're sharing all the cost of the site work, the utilities and all that, the heat, so we're kind of, we're kind of combining a building. So more will come of that, and that does alleviate significant crowding downtown, making a renovation possible, we're still exploring that. Or the footprint of a new building, if a decision was made to raise and rebuild, would have, could be smaller than what we have today. We're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of 17,000 square feet, and I believe if we count the entire building, it's 18 and change. So that's kind of what we're dealing with. We've been meeting weekly with La Valley Brenzinger, sometimes it seems like daily because we're going back and forth answering questions electronically, but we are making headway and hope to have some real numbers for you in the future, or the budget recommendations could be in the future for that. So that's kind of where we are, just to not completely repeat what Chief Pullen said. The fire department budget is also laden with a number of vehicle replacements. The Police Department, as you know, their normal police cruiser rotation is included in their operational budget. The other town departments before you, the vehicles go through the process of CIP so that, you know, we all hear, you understand what our needs are, and we can kind of calculate the pricing. And like Chief Pullen, I'm going to take a step back and discuss what was approved in 2022 because we're all experiencing significant delays. An engine, a fire engine replacement engine was approved in 2020, 2021, I'm sorry, in the March of 2022 Town Meeting, we have entered into a contract agreement with the vehicle manufacturer, and for the first time in my career, a fire engine is going to take more than a year to build. They're believing in between 15 and 18 months to build that engine. We're hoping to take delivery of that truck we bought in April, sometime in June, July of 2023. A pickup truck that was approved at the March 22 Town Meeting to replace one of our staff cars, we don't even have a VIN number for yet, it is not in production. We placed an order, an intent to purchase in October of 2021, and that vehicle still hasn't hit production, so, and Ford cannot give us an accurate date that is coming online. They hope, fingers crossed, that we might see by the end of the year. So we're discussing seriously how do, you know, are we encumbering funds that are already approved? And the ambulance that will come out of the Ambulance Revolving Fund won't have any bearing on town tax rate or the general fund. We will be accepting bids, I believe they're due by next week. We'll have a bid opening at the Select Board Meeting late August, and all major manufacturers of ambulance have told us due to Ford's inability to create chassis, they are two years out. So we can order this year and not get it until 2024, 2025. So that's kind of what, and maybe you'll hear the same from the others, that's kind of where all grappling with from a planning standpoint as department managers, trying to predict what our needs are, trying to explain to you the necessity of those, and then hit the supply chain and delivery delays on the manufacturers. And it's across the board. One might say, you know, why don't we explore Chevrolet or Dodge or whatever? They're all experiencing the same. Our fleet is predominantly Ford, and I think there's some economies they got to keep with the fleet so that we have standardization, and Harry Lindsey and the great crowd at Public Works, you know, maintains our stuff, we try to keep it consistent. So that's where we are. Like Chief Pullen mentioned, the fire substation is an add-on to the police station. We're looking for support for that as we move forward in 2023, and that will leave us some decisions to make going forward in future years. What is the, what's going to be the best alternative for Court Street? Fortunately, we have some time. The idea, our desire is to not bring it before the voters for a significant, you know, vote or decision anytime in the near future, 2023, but in the years to come, we'll have to discuss that, so we are still balancing that out. We are seeking your approval, or we are trying to see where we are with two vehicles on our schedule this year. We are asking to replace a 2012 Jeep Patriot. We bought that Jeep with, the same time Public Works Department bought a number of them, I think the town that year bought four or five. We're finding the vehicle's too small and underpowered for our needs. It is 11 years old now as well, and recommend purchasing a hybrid model Ford Explorer like the Police Department uses, again, for consistency with the fleet, and we see some benefits of the hybrid with fuel economy and sustainability and things of that nature. So I think we can move in that direction. When it'll be delivered remains to be seen, but first we have to see if it's supported to be replaced. The other vehicle we're seeking to replace is a 2008 Ford F-350 utility pickup. At the 10-year mark, we sought help from the Maintenance Department of Public Works. They did a great job with us, we pulled the bed, we did a lot of corrosion repair, we did a lot of cutting and welding underneath in the hope to get that truck a few more years. We succeeded. The truck is now 15 years old, has 107,000 miles, but is in need of significant repairs and replacements, so we are seeking to replace the 15-year-old utility pickup. That's the vehicle we use to run errands to Sunells and all over town so we don't use our engines and ambulances all the time. It's used every day, it pulls the boat to the boat launch, so we can launch the boat to retrieve kayaks and all. We use it to pull emergency operation trailers and emergency management equipment. It plows snow in the wintertime, we keep our rural water sources clear with that truck so that we're able to draw water from the grass sites throughout town all winter long. So the truck does see a significant amount of use, and it is a necessary piece of equipment for the fire department. Those are the only two vehicles that were, that have come up in rotation for '23. One of the things, and I'm preaching to the choir because I'm preaching before the Planning Board, but one of the things that's near and dear to the fire department is that we try desperately to stay on a vehicle replacement plan, master plan, schedule, use the term you want. I oversee a fleet of four engines and a ladder truck. All five of those pieces of equipment will run between three-quarters of a million to a million and a half dollars to replace. It's no easy task to get them funded and make sure we can stay on a pace that doesn't overwhelm the taxpayer in any one year. We try to keep it level funded, so as one truck kind of rotates through within a year of finishing paying the lease purchase, we try to get another one coming up in line so that we don't get behind. When we start falling behind, we rarely run the issue of having two trucks that might need to be replaced at virtually the same time, and that's a tough pill to swallow, and I fully understand that. In addition to those five very expensive piece apparatus, we replaced two ambulances and seven other utility staff and support vehicles. So those seven vehicles are rotating through regularly, two of which you've heard of that tonight. And what tends to happen with us is the decision is made to defer one due to other, the town needs, and fully understand and respect that, but we start stacking up also, and all of a sudden, we end up having three or four vehicles that are hitting that 10, 12-year mark with well in excess of 100,000 miles that we're looking to replace. And again, we're just trying to, like you, keep a level tax rate in town for the taxpayers, so we're seeking support to kind of stay on a regular schedule of these vehicles. I'm not going to really spend a lot of time on it, but Dave did mention it, as we push out in 2024, the only thing, the only thing, we have fire stations and things we're chatting about, right? The only vehicle we're talking about replacing in 2024 would be the vehicle I drive, Department Manager Transportation, I drive a 2014 Ford Explorer. It rolls into that 10-year mark, it currently has 90,000 miles, so by next year, it'll be right in that 10, 11-year-old, 100,000-mile vehicle realm. In 2026, we'll seek funding from the Ambulance Revolving Fund to replace another ambulance. With any luck, we'll have received the one we're ordering this year by that time and get another one. In 2027, will be the next year, we seek town approval to purchase a big-ticket item, another engine will come do that time, it'll be 20 years old, we call it our Engine 3. It already has 106,000 road miles, so it's already seeing a lot of use, but it's a few years out, just planting that seed. We have one on order now. And in 2028, we'll seek replacing another pickup utility vehicle at that time. Those are, that was just purchased in 2018, still in fine shape, but just kind of looking at the six-year plan, how far out, you know, the planning process goes. So that's where, that's where we will stand over the next few years. So entertain any questions you have that you feel appropriate for me, or I may point to Dave if they get too involved over here, because he's been a super help, both Chief Pullen and I, shaping this whole fire station, substation process through. Without Dave, I think both Chief Pullen and I would be overwhelmed with the, with the work and the necessary information the architects are looking for, so.
Questions?
May I? So I'm gonna say a few things and correct me if I'm wrong, okay? So a few points that I wanted to make from the Select Board level when we were discussing this is that the reason, part, some of the reasons we talked about. this is that the reason, part, some of the reasons we talked about vetting the substation and fire department on the Continental is because of the call time, which you already brought up. But there would also still be the police, the fire department down on Court Street with a small police presence, right? We were talking about keeping a room or something there for the police department so that there would still be, that was discussed. This is more for the public and for everyone else.
Chief Coolen's not here to defend yourself, but the answer is yes.
Right, I was kind of, when he left, but because one of the conversations was...
Bruce Page even volunteered.
Right, the fire, the police department and having a room, and one of the rooms was suggested was the Will Wright Room, remember? And we kind of said, no, that one's not a good idea. It gets used a lot. And at the fire department, your timing, but with the police department, they're assigned sections. So, them not being downtown for a main department area, it, it works out better that way because of that. Also, at least immediately, there is, wouldn't be a call or expected call to add to personnel or equipment to do this.
Could you repeat that, Nancy?
To add to personnel or equipment to do this right away.
To staff that one.
Yes.
There would not be?
At, at this point, it's my understanding that that would not be on the table as part of the substation and the new police department.
So, the existing personnel would just spread out over the two substations?
That's my understanding, as of now. I have not had an update and...
Did we shift gears back to the fire department or the police department?
The fire department.
The answer is, the answer to you is no additional personnel. Part of, part of the, and I arrived in town just after the prior Warren article to support a new substation, new fire station on Epping Road. And part of that was to hire twelve more firefighters to staff two buildings and whatnot. And, and I think we're loud and clear at that time. It was the proverbial lead balloon. It just couldn't gain any, any elevation. So, what has happened over the last, I think, eighteen years? Well, the last eighteen years, the town has grown, got much busier, and we have already hired eight of those twelve personnel and, and restructured the fire department after Chief Como retired. So, we're at a point now where we can comfortably say, we are going to fill both a substation and a central station with three people and four people. And we have four chief officers for adequate supervision through this year's CBA with the firefighters association. They, they sought recognition of a captain and a lieutenant, so both are recognized leadership abilities. So, we've kind of laid the groundwork without additional costs for all of this to happen. One, one thing I said right up front in the floor of the town hall was, I'm not a politician. I cannot take the no new tax pledge, and I cannot stand in front of you and say, over the next ten or twenty years, that we will never come back and seek funding for additional personnel. But what I will tell you, it will not be because we're building a substation, it's because we have more call volume and we need more people to protect the town of Exeter.
That's what I was looking for. Absolutely, but that's exactly what I was looking for, Chief.
That's critical because we could build you the Taj Mahal and buy you great vehicles, and it would be cheap compared to what personnel and the associated benefits would cost. And you know that better than us.
Correct.
Because you work on your budget all the time. What costs in town government is personnel and the associated benefits, especially the retirement or pension benefit. So, the fact that you're committing to that is wonderful, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I thought we were still on the PD that, yeah, we'll give the room. Rather, we renovate a building, we'll let the cops come down.
You're mingled there because of the, but yeah.
We're joined in more ways than you know. And that's why this whole planning process has been so important to have both police and fire involved and Dave working through it. It's, it has been a rewarding process. There are, there are days we get frustrated, and, and I had one of those the other day and need to apologize to all the powers to be, but we're, but we're working through those, and I think what we, what will be presented to the taxpayers through you, the BRC and the select board over the next few months will be a quality project that, that we feel makes sense to the town.
John, any questions?
No.
I, I am not going to speak for Gwen, but no, I just, I, I appreciate your true financial planning and ability to explain it to us, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. One thing I did mention to Dave, and I, and I can share with you tonight if you'd like, from the initial CIP packet that we put out thirty-ish days ago and talking with Ford and all that, there already has been a price change on that hybrid Explorer. I have a copy for everyone if you'd like one to add to your packet, or we can just process that through at a later date as we move along. So, it's depending what you like, if you feel appropriate.
If they want it. Would you like, I'll, I'll have it. You give it to me, I'll put it in the update, and they'll have it on the 25th.
Perfect. I'll give it to Dave. You don't need more paperwork. We don't need to kill more trees, so. Well, here are no more questions. I thank you so much. I'll plan on being here on the 25th to perhaps answer any questions the town might have as well, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. We appreciate your thoroughness and glad to hear everybody's working together in the sandbox.
Speaking of sandbox?
We don't just play with kids playing, come on. Thank you, Greg Beeson, Exeter Parks and Rec, and thank you for having us, and welcome back, Dan. We have two quasi-three projects in the CIP this year. We'll go very quickly. Park Improvement Fund, as you've known, the Park Improvement Fund has been funded the last four years at a hundred thousand dollars each, and we are finally making a dent on slowly fixing up the parks. Things this year that we, we've hit and they're highlighted, and the budget committee had asked us to go small. We did the concrete repair. We had a leak at the pool and we fixed it. The pipe repair, obviously. The playground at St., Park Street Common has been completed. We're repairing the pool slide. We added softball fencing, tables and chairs and around the rec park, water fountains, which look good installed, but supply chain issues is, we're waiting on some parts. We also put irrigation that is now shut off at Townhouse Common. ADA mats at Park Street Common, which actually has been breathtaking to see that people use the, the park now in wheelchairs. We're putting an ADA ramp in the lower tennis courts next week. So, that will be, the lower tennis courts will now be ADA compliant. And we had planned to plant trees at Brickyard, but that has been put on hiatus because we're not going to plant anything in drought. So, just give you a little snapshot, but going into next year, if funded, the pool repair, we've had to delay it the last couple of years, the pool painting, I'm sorry, due to COVID. Where we need to renovate the ball field at Gilman Park, there's a little T-ball field. Running a water line into Gilman Park to have a water fountain. We don't have any water fountains, and we're trying to be as sustainable as possible. The spray pad does need repair, so we're going to have to cut that open and repair. It is some leakage. Drainage at Brickyard Park, it was built with excess clay from another project, so it doesn't drain the greatest, so we're going to try to solve that, as well as start doing some minor tweaks to the bathhouse to make it a little more charming looking. The interior needs to be painted. Again, we want to remove the bars from the facade to make it look less institutional. So, those are a few things that we're trying to hit with the Park Improvement Fund. We're not looking for a big project. That one is the next CIP project, which is Park Street, I'm planning a playground. This is finally in the CIP. We started this process for the Planet Playground renovation by collecting data, starting in March, on what elements people wanted to see. It did come out where three hundred and sixty-seven people responded to the survey. We took that data and then fed it to eight of the largest manufacturers of playground equipment out there and with the goal of creating a universal design for the new Planet Playground. We took those designs and then let the public again vote on those to see what designs they were interested in. And now we're down to three. We had a Zoom informational night the other night in which each of the manufacturers were on there talking about the designs. And so, we are having that voting open until August 31st. That being said, we have applied for, we are applying for LWCF, Land and Water Conservation Fund, to offset some of the costs of this project because anyone that knows poured-in-place surfacing to make it ADA accessible for wheelchairs is very expensive, and that is almost as much as the playground equipment itself. So, in that being said, it is total with acquisition of the property and renovation of the, of the playground. It's about a million dollars for that playground. Any questions?
So, you are at the point where you're going to have to purchase that property?
Yes, we have, well, I can't say yes. The new owner has finally closed on it. I've been going back and forth, and we should have a number shortly on what they're looking to. But that will be encumbered into the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. It ranks higher when they go to acquire property rather than just help renovate it. So, the town could have been proactive and gone out and purchased the property, but when LWCF can actually help purchase the property, it gives it a stronger credit score, I guess.
It's been a long, a long, multi-year project.
Yeah, well, two years, two years ago, we thought we had a long-term lease set up with them, only to have the former owner decide to sell again. So, it's been two years for HUD to finally close on the project. So, it was a long time coming, so the new owner is located in Manhattan somewhere, and he's, they're very anxious to say, why do we have this little piece of property with a playground on it in our, our assisted living home? So, that is the good news, but please go out and vote. I'm going to put it out to the public, take a look at it. And then, these are only conceptuals. There's still time, once we have a, a vendor picked, we're going to have the rec advisory board then make a final decision and then open it up for some more input so we can get any tweaks to it to make sure that it meets the needs of all the residents.
Good.
Greg, we talk about the playground, the wooden playground.
Correct.
The wood's completely going away.
The wood is completely going away.
I don't know the names of any of the playgrounds, but I have two grandchildren, so I've been to them all multiple times. And that one always made me nervous, but they love it. They can play hide and seek and other stuff.
It is very, it's very iconic. It is ranked as one of the top playgrounds in the, in the state of New Hampshire. But the deterioration, in 2016, Leather's and Associates that literally helped build it in the community build, wrote an assessment report saying this, it's time, and that was 2016. So, we're now 2022 and...
So, what's, yeah, I bet it was. Yeah, it was, yeah, yeah. What, what are you looking at? Like, what, something different than what we see at the schools?
Something a little more customized and unique than what you see the standard schools. Like, the Park Street Common is your standard playground you would see at a school. This is more customized for the data that was shown to us. They like to keep the homage of Planet Playground, so two of the three finalists are rocket-themed, one being where it actually picks up the whole solar system and very educational. One is a castle theme because castle-themed ranked high. So, they, they're, they're made out of a variety of different products. There's GFRC, which is glass reinforced concrete, like we have at Kids Park. It's the carved concrete. There's some elements of the, like Trex, so there's Trex throughout it. You're not going to find a lot of wood. Even Leather's and Associates that does do them are now more of a Trex-based product. So, and the, the most important thing is the accessibility portion of it. That's the one thing we're really focused on, and what the data in the survey told us is, they want to have every child be able to go on there and play, no matter what their ability, what their disability is. So, a lot of them touch on not only mobility.
That's difficult, huh?
Yeah, and, and that's what drives up the cost. Like I said, the poured-in-place is, right now, I got a quote the other day of forty-one dollars per square foot. So, we're, we're not going all solid poured-in-place to scare people. We're going to do pathways because for the sensory issue, or we want to have the wood chips still. The kids love, a lot of parents do want the wood chips rated very high, but trying to push someone in a wheelchair through the wood chips is nearly impossible, to the point where I had a resident text me a picture of her daughter at the new Park Street Common because we have ADA matting now. This is the first playground in town she's able to push her daughter into the ADA swing and let her swing.
And you fenced it in.
And we fenced it in.
That was awesome.
We fenced it in, and we took the input from the people that put that survey in. We, we went with a fence that would blend in, not your chain-link fence that would stick out like a harsh chain-link fence. So, the nice aluminum really encapsulates it. And John, the funniest thing is, for the four days after we opened it, I got several phone calls because everyone said, I thought you said the playground was open. I went to the gate and it was locked. Like, that's the maintenance gate. If you just walk around to the pathway, that's, it goes between Park Street and, and Main Street, Epping Road technically, I guess. It's right there, and of course, they're like, oh, I'm sorry, sorry to bother you. And the day after, even though it was in the nineties, there were probably twenty-five to thirty kids on there that afternoon.
And just one more question, because I've just for my own, you, you have nothing to do with the playgrounds at the schools, right?
Correct. That is totally separate. But Rusty Lister is great if anyone has any feedback for those. Rusty Lister is your guy to talk to.
His mouth says about to be deep under the swings, which is, it's fine.
Well, there's a certain depth for falls, for under swings, and one of the things that we've started incorporating the last few years is wear mats because technically, and I'm getting in really deep into the weeds here, those troths that you see kids kick up, those are actually not compliant. You're, you're supposed to keep it level, and you're supposed to go out there and actually rake it level every time it happens. So, we put these rubberized, rubberized mats where they just swing their feet on them and it stays there. So, that's, I don't want to go too far into the weeds, but...
That's all.
Yeah. Jen?
For Planet Playground, like, what's the timeframe for that? When can we actually see that?
That, that, that's the one where if it goes forward with the funding and we get LWCF, we'll know we have been awarded LWCF prior to the March vote. Lead times for playgrounds are astronomical. The chief said it for the cars. Some lead times, for instance, we ordered replacement parts for our pool slide last November. They just arrived last week. So, large-scale playgrounds like this, you're talking six, eight, ten, maybe eighteen months before. So, Planet Playground, if God voted, would not be going away anytime soon, and we would be very cognizant on the transition from one playground to the next because we don't want, it's very, and we have a short window, too. We, we, we can't be starting renovations in May to have a playground renovated when that's a full source of having our playground and our pool operation. So, it would have to be pushed out to another time. So, it, it could be anywhere from a year to a year and a half to two before we even complete it. So, it's not, and we're going to work with everyone. I know one of the things, we've already gotten several phone calls from past people that have pickets because a lot of people did a great, great job putting Planet Playground together, wanting their pickets back when we go to disassemble it. And I told them, please wait. We, we still need a fence to keep the kids in, so please be patient. And we're hoping to incorporate some of the older stuff as an homage to the Planet Playground and figure out a way how we can really keep that dedication to them as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good question.
All set. Well, thank you very much.
Well, one last, last one, and this is why I said quasi-three. It, it was a TBA, but as you know, last year, we were lucky enough to, and gracious to the residents, to vote in the purchase of Ten Hampton Road, which has been astounding for parking. If anyone driven by on a Saturday or in the evening, it's well-used. I think I saw Jen walking from that parking lot last night, coming down from, to the Lollipop Festival.
No, I didn't park up there. I didn't realize we could park up there, but now that I know, I was at the Lollipop.
Because the parking lot was full. So, after the March vote, we, Melissa Roy, myself and Russ, were looking at alternative funding. The town was gracious enough to fund a hundred thousand dollars, and after meeting with Jeff Beck and DPW, we want to take it slow in the renovations and make sure we do it correctly. We've applied for community development block grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to assist in the renovation of the property. This would only... Uh, this would only go forward if we got the 750,000. If we don't, it's Plan B. Move the Parks and Rec Agency up there and then come back and, and chip away at it. But also thanks to the assistance of Assistant Director, our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy, we've also all put in, uh, and G Chain has brought down to Washington, $285,000 for funding for the HVAC systems route, uh, to help make it a little more energy efficient as well as have the proper, uh, mechanisms in place to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So we're, we have two irons in the pot and hopefully maybe we get both. And then myself, working with Jeff and DPW and Melissa, we can move this project forward and renovate it and get Parks and Rec over there.
Okay. Any questions about that? Well, Ken, thank you for your time.
All right, I'll thank you.
Those that have come in? Thank you. Who's next? Jay or, no, okay.
DPW.
DPW, all right.
Hello, Paul Flossage, the town engineer. And Matt's gonna put up, uh, just a little bit of slideshow to try to keep, uh, keep us in order here. And, um, uh, with us tonight again is myself, Paul Flossage, town engineer. Jay Perkins is going to be, uh, the highway superintendent. He's gonna be helping me with some of the general fund, uh, projects. We got Matt Berubri, the water sewer manager, and also Jeff Beck, uh, from the facilities and fleet supervisor. Uh, so the first project I'd like to talk about is the sidewalk, uh, program. And in your packet, in the whole CIP packet, I'll reference the page every time, it's on page 21. And we've been, uh, having this, uh, this program, uh, since 2014 and it was funded at $120,000. Uh, times have changed in these eight years. Uh, we did another analysis. Uh, the new number is 200,000 a year is what we're suggesting, uh, for funding. Uh, this year, we're gonna be using some of the funds for Sidewalk on Linden Street. I think it'll take the balance down to zero. And, uh, we're just looking to build up the, um, uh, the capital reserve fund for the sidewalk. And that's all I have for that one, if you have any questions.
So no, no new extensions or anything?
Nope, we, we don't have it earmarked for whatever, but you're not gonna be doing a heck of a lot of sidewalks for just $200,000.
Thank you.
Is there a, um, like document somewhere, like online, where people can go and see, like, is there like a prioritization chart or something where you've identified which sidewalks need improvement?
There was back in 2014. Uh, we actually use our GIS system to, uh, plug in the rating of the sidewalk. The priority of the sidewalk, like if schools were close to it, they'd get a higher thing, uh, higher rating. And with that, uh, we printed out the highest rated sidewalks and then drew circles around areas and say, this is a group of sidewalks. We'd think about replacement at one time and we did some estimates. And if you went back there, you could see that we started plugging away pretty good at that with some of our projects. So it is the sidewalk management program that, uh, is on the website somewhere, uh, with Public Works. And there is a specific slide in there that, um, showed where these sidewalk suggestions were. Uh, and it also had some estimates, but those estimates are pretty dang old right now. And from what I understand, Dave, you're, you're doing something with a sidewalk?
Yeah, we're, we've just kicked off the bike and pedestrian master plan, so they're looking at all our sidewalk networks, looking at potential connections, even probably want some information for far as, as far as, uh, asset management, this management program. So we'll be looking at that, too.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would just be, like, I just feel like every now and then I go on Facebook and people are like, this sidewalk, you know, people are always complaining about their sidewalk. And, um, it's the worst sidewalk, you know, they never, yeah, people just complain, obviously. And it would be, but it'd be so helpful to be like, hey, yeah, this one is, you know, prioritized, it's third on the list or something like that. And it'd just be, if, if that list exists somewhere, like, it'd be good to know.
Yeah, but it isn't one, number one through number 10. It's like, these are all important and it leaves the flexibility of choosing where you want to go next, depending on if you got a utility project or something that comes up in that.
That makes sense, yeah. Yeah, so you gotta, you've gotta kind of choose based on...
So they're called out, but they don't have number one through whatever.
Yeah, all right.
Well, at least they give them an idea that their sidewalk is part of that or not.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, maybe bring it up to the forefront of the website if it's buried somewhere.
Dan?
Is there, are there still plans to do the, I know there was voting to do, for the funding, but, um, Kingston Road, is there still plans to do that? That's still in the works, it just hasn't happened yet.
It just hasn't happened.
Waiting for the right time.
Well, no, it, it is a delay and, um, uh, right now, property easements.
I'm sorry.
Property easements.
Got it.
That's where it is.
But we got the final one signed the other day. So we, we have gotten them all, except by the time we got them all, like a week ago, from the last person to hold out that we needed one, I mean, that was critical to the project. So we finally secured it. But four of the easements that we had signed got them so long ago, they need to be updated.
Of course.
But it's, we just have to go back and get the same people that were, you know, that signed them before, so we're doing that. Um, so that should start, I mean, we're, we're hoping to get in the ground in the fall of, I mean, in the spring of 2023.
Oh, that's awesome. And is the funding that we approved adequate or is that gonna have to be adjusted?
Well, I asked that question and I'm waiting for that answer. Uh, but part of it is also going out to bid. And what we have, we, we don't know, like, so I think we're okay on engineering right now, for the engineering phase, but then we go out to bid and those numbers come back, then we'll know, do we need more money?
And that may end up being a warrant article.
Yeah, I don't know if it could, I don't know if we'll know in time for, for 2023 on that, uh, but we'll, we'll just keep plugging away.
Is there any way to, there's no way to really jump the process so we don't lose another year?
No.
No.
No, no, I, I think we're on target. I mean, we're, we're, the DOT, I mean, every time you do something, every step in the process, you finish right away. You have to submit the right-of-way certificate, it goes to DOT. Sometimes it goes to Federal Highway, certain aspects of the project for review. And it kinda goes, you know, away for four to six weeks. I mean, sometimes months, and it comes back and you don't have any control of that timing. You can push and you can call and you can, you know, so I'll, I'll take that suggestion and try to make sure if we do need, uh, additional funding. But we did go back for more funding, Paul, when? That was, that was just a couple of years ago, right?
It was a few years ago, yeah. Or, or an extension of when, when also.
Yeah. So I'll keep you posted, the best I, that's the best I can do. We can, we can try to move forward as quickly as we can.
It's an important project, given the Riverwoods communities.
Understood. Understood. I didn't even, yeah, when we go, so, yeah, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get out to, to bid and then know the numbers.
Yeah. Thank you.
For this, for this warrant, I'll be tough.
Okay, uh, next project, uh, it's on page 16, it's the Intersection Improvement Program. And, uh, back in FY19, we were funded 50,000 for a study. Uh, we studied, uh, four intersections, uh, water in front, just out here by the, uh, fan stand, Front Pine and Linden intersection, uh, water high in, uh, Clifford and Franklin. And then lastly, Winter Railroad and Columbus. And there is a report, final report, on the town website where you can see, um, what the consultants came up with. Uh, there was a presentation to the board, um, oh, a few months ago. And, um, now we're at a CIP project to say, hey, do you want to do any of these improvements? And we actually picked two of those, uh, improvements to, um, to put on here. At least it'll get some, uh, good discussion. Uh, the first one is the, uh, Front Pine and Linden, uh, project where a rotary is suggested. And, uh, there is the scheme shown right there on the screen of what that may look like. And the cost for that is, uh, $720,000. And that takes you through design, a little bit of property, uh, purchase, and, and also some, um, construction administration on the engineering's part. The second project that, uh, we put in this, uh, CIP to be done at the same time was the option, uh, number one of the, uh, Winter Railroad and Columbus. And that was just minor, uh, curb extensions to, um, uh, to allow better sightlines of people traveling through those intersections. It was the least expensive of those options and, uh, we, we thought it would be a good project, uh, for a, uh, quick fix as you contemplate whether you want to spend more money on, on the Winter Railroad Columbus intersection also. Um, so, uh, the two together, 798,000. Now, what happened last year, and I'm gonna go back up to FY22, another round of funding, uh, for other intersections was, uh, approved, uh, by the voters for 50,000. And what we think we're gonna do with that, uh, this time around is to finish looking at the intersections that are already called out in the master plan. Uh, and the remaining ones are the Holland Way, Hampton Road intersection, uh, the, uh, Epping, uh, Road, Park and Winter Street intersection, very close to, to that one, um, Hampton Road and Guinea Road, and also Brentwood Road at Dogtown, uh, Road. So that's what we think we're going to pursue with, uh, the, the Phase Two part. And then, uh, lastly, out in an outer year, FY25, uh, what, what other intersections you wanna take a look at? When we did the Phase One part, there was also, uh, like a five-year analysis of accidents that helped determine some rankings of intersections. Uh, so we'll probably go to that list at that time or, or see which way, uh, people are wanting, uh, improvements done and decide what to do in a future year out. And with that, any questions?
You call this the traffic circle. It's not a roundabout?
Yeah, roundabout.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the terminology is important, 'cause I feel like people have negative associations with, I like roundabout.
Yeah, because this allows a large vehicle to turn easily. Yeah.
All right, roundabout it is. If that's better than everybody, we'll call it that.
Questions for Rose, or this part, pardon?
Okay. All right.
Something needs to happen, that's what we know.
So, uh, the, the next project is, um, Public Works Facility, uh, 50,000 dollar, uh, request. And, um, you know, I'm sitting here and I, I can hear what the police and the fire department is going through, uh, also. And we started our project, uh, back in FY19 and 20, uh, with Lasswell Architects that came in and helped with programming of space needs and, and also provided a concept plan. Uh, that, um, uh, that report is also on the Public Works website, on, uh, uh, with the town website, on the Public Works side of things. And in FY21, um, there was the survey of the parcel that's right ne, that was right next to us, we, we've obtained that, and also wetlands delineation on there. Now, last year, uh, we had an amount called out also so that we could take, uh, the survey plan, the wetlands, and, uh, situate the building on it, uh, and also decide where this, uh, fueling island needs to go. We're having a little bit of trouble here with our, uh, fueling island. And, uh, also the other task was, uh, when, to get some estimated cost of what some of the site work and building work was going to cost us. But that was not approved by the voters. Uh, so, so this year, we're coming back with the, uh, with the same situation, only this time, uh, we have also a, um, a suggestion from the facilities group, uh, that there'll be a DPW operation study, uh, for current and future, future operation and staffing needs. Uh, that, I think we, we need to have that to get their blessings on moving forward with, uh, with the project. Any questions? No? Okay, the Great Bay Total Nitrogen General Permit. Um, the general permit, as you heard, and this is on page 15, as you heard, uh, last year is a, uh, way to try to cap some of the nitrogen in the bay. Uh, it's a five-year permit and I think we are now requesting funds for year three of that permit. And we came up with some funds, uh, last year, I think they totaled 99,000 dollar-ish, uh, that was approved. And I think it's gonna be, uh, paid for through the, uh, town, uh, IRA funds. Uh, but we haven't done much with it as far as the CIP. There's some in the budget, there's some in the CIP. And that's because we've gotten, uh, approval, uh, from the, um, EPA Watershed Assistance Grants folks to help with, uh, uh, three items. One is a, uh, Advanced Septic System Incentive type program, uh, fertilizer reduction with the Healthy Lawn, uh, program, and also additional, uh, installation of BMPs that can help with removal of nutrients in our stormwater system. And, and in your write-up there, it, it says that it's on hold because EPA was holding, uh, didn't give approval for funding or didn't have the funding for it. But we just learned this week that, uh, that is all forthcoming, so you'll start to see some, uh, contracts and that sort of thing, uh, being facilitated. And it isn't, we can take 45,000 off of what we were already asking for, and that's the new number, because every time you have one of these, uh, grant situations, they always stick a few little extra things that they want in there also. But, uh, you'll see movement starting, uh, on that. And now to get you up to, up to date. Uh, this year, we're asking for, uh, 40,000, uh, dollars. And, um, excuse me, just for a second, I thought I had written that down. And that would be to facilitate just a little extra of those, uh, BMP designs and also help with some of the, um, uh, fertilizer education, uh, program there. So that's what, it was 30 for the BMPs and 10 for the, um, uh, education part of it. So that's what we're asking for this year is 40,000. And it's to supplement the work that's about ready to start now, uh, that, now that we got the, uh, EPA grant, uh, moving again. And, um, with that, I'll take any questions.
Go ahead, Dan.
So I'm assuming this is all the stuff that we're doing so that maybe we don't have to go lower and do more work on the wastewater treatment plan? Is that kind of the, the general idea behind this?
Yeah, that's the, that's the idea. They're looking at the health of the Great Bay and all of the communities in the watershed that have a facility that go, uh, wastewater facility that goes into the bay, uh, that's where this general permit is applied to. Um, if at the end of the permit cycle that they don't see improvements or real movement to eliminate nutrients into the Great Bay, it'll probably be reflected in the next round of the, uh, general permit.
So this is all good work that we're doing to show them that we're continuing to work on it?
Yes, and also, uh, the good work on Matt's side, too, that, uh, you know, he's got a pretty good plant, that he's doing wonderful things with nitrogen in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a question, I think maybe if you went on, Dave, we've, we've talked a little bit about the effect of private septic systems adding to that problem that are close to... that are close to flowing water. And from my level of ignorance, I understand that there are systems that are available. Of course, they cost more than the standard septic system. But is that something, Dave, that the board needs to look at as a requirement, if it's back? Or I don't, it's a community problem. So our role may be involved there too, but please.
Yeah, yeah. Let me go back to the funding of last year, the EPA grant that's about ready to happen. One of the components in there is this advanced septic system where there is another piece of the septic system train that you can put into a septic system that will boost the efficiency of nitrogen removal. And once the nitrogen gets into the ground, it'll take, you know, many years to get out into the bay. So you won't see results right away through the groundwater flow and stuff. And the part of this grant that I've been talking about here several times is to see what they cost, see the efficiencies of them, see where maybe the town could incentivize folks, maybe financially, maybe whatever, to get more folks volunteering to do these. And, you know, as you were talking about, do you want to have it as a hard requirement or not, you know? And it is a financial impact every time you do such a thing.
Of course.
So that is going to be put in a nice little chapter in this EPA report. So I would say let's see what that says.
Well, stay tuned.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Carry on.
All right. West Side Drive project. Okay, so that's going to be on page 26. And I want to introduce another idea. And you're going to see this come up several times in the next few projects. And because of era funding that you hear out there, there's more money available to try to take advantage of. So in our revolving, state revolving fund applications, and that's where the money is being funneled through, we put in a couple of extra projects to see if any of them get funded. So you're going to see some numbers now of at least the clean water SRF. And clean water SRF is really the drain lines and the sewer lines, or the sewer projects and the drainage project, not necessarily the lines themselves. And you'll see what they called out in their initial draft, principal forgiveness and the loan amounts, based on the loan amounts for those utilities. So West Side Drive has a little bit of history to it. And it really started, oh, back in, say, 2010, when the town had to get a handle on some of the extra flows in the sewer system, the I and I situation. Because if it was too much, the sewers couldn't handle it and it would go out into the environment, out through manholes and whatnot. So one of the areas that was a high I and I inflow and infiltration, where it's this, this either stormwater or groundwater flows getting into the sewer system, was the West Side Drive area. And we're looking at it for a long time of, you know, how can we address I and I in there? And what we tried was education. Hey, you really, you can't have a sump pump into your sewer lines. So please get them out. And we didn't find a tremendous result from that. But back in FY '20, the town funded a project for $100,000, of which some clean water SRF had $75,000 of forgiveness for that. So it was $25,000 out of the sewer fund in the end run to see what we could do over there. And our engineers, it was Underwood engineers, went through and come up with some concept plans. And it was also during the COVID period of pretty big shutdown. And we had the Zoom-type neighborhood meetings to find out what was important to the folks. And from there, a project kind of formulated. And also, the dollar figures are known a little bit more also. So last year, in the CIP, there was $331-ish thousand that was approved on the town warrant. And of that 331,000, from, anyway, we just put the applications in now for funding. We're going to be able to get through state ARPA and principal forgiveness, 122,000 for design activities right now. But what I'm asking for in this slide is for next year to go to construction. And the construction is just over $6 million for next year. We were ranked pretty high in the stormwater category with 20% principal forgiveness. So 740,000 would come off of the stormwater and sewer side of things. The drinking water side, the drinking water SRF, we were ranked number 75. They didn't have any dollar figures shown on any of their reports. So we don't know what that means, but that's pretty far down the list on that one. So that is the project. It's going to go to design this year with funds that we already have or in the works to have, and construction next year.
So that's the whole West Side neighborhood?
That's the whole West Side neighborhood, which will have drainage improvements, certainly some sort of lateral hookup for sump pumps, road reconstruction, and a new water line put in there too. If you're putting in the new road, now's the time for the new water line also.
Dan?
So forgive me because I don't remember, but how does this rate in terms of impact to like the JD Hill project that we did on I and I? Is it as important?
It is, it is. JD Hill, there was three areas back a dozen years ago with the high and I.
Right.
JD Hill is one. And when we did the JD Hill project, we didn't do all of JD Hill. We did the worst parts of JD Hill.
Right.
And then there was the West Side Drive. And then there was another one over by McDonald's.
Allen's.
Allen's, Allen Street area.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, so those were the three highest areas that maybe we could figure out. At the time, we called them pilot projects. We don't call them that anymore. These are real projects now here.
And this is to lessen the inflow and infiltration, which just to reiterate, it's water flowing into the sewer system that has nothing to do with the sewer system, basically.
It is, it is, but.
Right.
What's also important with this one, there's a high groundwater anyhow. And you can actually see it flowing out of cracks in the road there, and it deteriorates the road quicker also.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, on to the next one. School Street area. What I am asking for, or the department is asking for, and this is on page 20, is for design funds, 405,000 for this year. Now, we took a lot of our projects, even though that we want construction of West Side Drive in '23, School Street wants construction in '24. We're going to show you another one, construction in '25, and then another one even further out. We put these in as SRF requests in the hopes of getting monies through the era funding. And again, the ranked number 90, but out of the 3.2-ish million for the clean water side of things, 25% principal forgiveness on this one, almost to $800,000. Drinking water was ranked, but again, no funds. But down in the picture, you can see the Lincoln Street was done recently. Now, we've got the Garfield, Cassuth School, and Union Streets to take care of also. And this will be replacing the utilities, roadway and sidewalk, whether it's two sides, one side, no sides. All that is to be debated also. Okay?
Yep.
Now, we're getting out into further years. And we've got the Water Street area. And to define that, you got to look at the sketch a little bit. It starts at the Main Street area, right at the hillside, and goes out of town to almost the, I think it's Norris Brook, Norris Brook right there. And that, the biggest reason for this one is the water main situation. If we use a lot of water out at the DPW complex, this whole area on the plan ends up having reduced water pressures or hardly any water pressures at all. And I think after the Salem and Park Street utility project that is being constructed now, once this main gets in there, you won't have that situation either. So when that, when we're doing this main, the road is in pretty sad shape. Again, you can see water many times during the springtime coming out into the road in several places from groundwater and also surface runoff. It's the bottom part of our town. So you've got large sewers, you've got large drain lines that I think that we'll do some slip lining on the largest sewer lines and replacements of the medium-sized ones. And also look at some of the drainage infrastructure, which isn't, which is undersized on this area also. So it's a big, big project. We had consultants help us out with both the SRF application and the cost estimates for that. And this is the project that we would have slated, at least in our game plan now, if we're trying to do every one of them in 2025 for construction. This one here did not get any SRF principal forgiveness. However, what it did offer was a stormwater planning grant of $100,000 that we could start planning out the project. And yeah, we should be doing it for stormwater planning, but we can also see how it fits with any of the other utility planning also.
Question?
No question.
Yeah?
It probably had that ranking because of it's so low and the tunnel nature for stormwater planning? Would that be fair to say?
You know, this is a really good thing that it's not asking for design monies right now. And we've got, hey, here, why don't you plan out your design a little bit better right now? So I think some of the state folks were thinking pretty good about this one here, knowing that it is going to be quite a big project here.
Yeah.
Yeah. The next one. The previous one was Water Street, and that was a new project on the list that you haven't seen on the six-year CIP. This is another one that's a new one on the six-year CIP. Again, it's a street-type reconstruction project. And we have a sewer line that is in poor shape. It's an old sewer line. And we also heard last year with the Columbus, Brentwood Road, Epping Road intersection that some of the residents on this road was looking at traffic implications and stuff. So we thought this would be a good one. First of all, before we did many, much improvements to the road, we'd want to fix our utilities underneath there. The water was done a few years ago. Now, what's outstanding is the sewer line, some of the drainage was done maybe 20 years ago or so. So we've got, we'll have good utilities on it. And at the same time, we can look at the traffic considerations for it too with the consultant. Now, we put this in, again, this is out there in design. It's also out there for construction. When I say out there, I mean later years down the road. But here, for our consideration too, the clean water side of things is offering 25% principal forgiveness So I was talking about projects that are out. This is also a new submission. And please don't read all the literature up there. About the only thing that's really good is page 17. I screwed that slide up, and I didn't go back and fix it. So I apologize for that. But if you look at page 17, it says that the Lincoln Street Bridge over the Exeter River has bulging and settling wing walls and abutments. I don't know what program that Jennifer Perry is talking about, but there is $310,000 for some of the fixes of that. That is not reflected or taken out at a $653,000. But we're looking at a project next year, and this is only to give you a highlight of what you'll be seeing next year, or at least know that this is a significant project coming down the line for next year at $653,000. Okay?
Good.
The next project is just a reminder about another dam project, the Pick Pocket, Pick Pocket Dam. We are using Town Ara, Monday, funding for a feasibility analysis of how to modify the dam to do the appropriate discharge. We are also, and then I'm talking currently here, we are also getting a $100,000 SRF planning grant for that analysis, and also a coastal resilience grant for $40,000. And those are all in the works. They haven't been blessed by the state yet to move forward. But once that happens, we'll be moving forward with the analysis of Pick Pocket Dam. Now, the reason that it's up here is in, by June of 2024, according to our latest requests for action, we need to be applying for whatever type of permits we're going to do to modify the dam. There's no solution to the dam yet. But the thing that's pushing us is the 2024 date, June of 2024. Okay, any questions? All right, so now I'm going to turn the podium over to Matt Barubi, and he'll walk through some of the sewer and water projects. Thank you.
Matt, you need me to do that stuff?
Yeah.
Tell me first.
The arrows, sir. Thank you, Matt Barubi, the water sewer manager. So tonight, this project here is a sewer capacity rehabilitation. Last year, we were able to successfully receive $200,000 to continue some capacity analysis that we've conducted. And what the initial two phases have told us is that we have a potential capacity issue kind of in the High Street Cross Country Gilman Lane area. If you all remember where we had the major collapse here on High Street. If you all remember where we had the major collapse here on High Street. We've been receiving requests to expand in some of the commercial properties and the, the sewer just happens to run through that same area. And really there's only two areas where the sewer makes it across town, and that's through the Siphons, which we're working on that project currently, and it's been out to bid. And the other way is right through downtown over the Great Bridge, and that's what we're talking about here today. For us to be able to allow some of our commercial users upstream, we would need to replace 550 feet with some new PVC pipe. We'd also need to put some 18 inch pipe, 2100 feet. And then we'd probably try to reline the cross, the rest of the cross country sewer main all the way to Drinkwater Road. Cause that's where the path of it goes. It goes up the street, takes a right where the new construction project PEA is expanding, goes around and goes cross country all the way to Drinkwater and continues all the way towards our Stratum Industrial Park. And that's kind of where I'm saying who wants to expand. So for us to be able to safely convey their sewer, I'm requesting designing a, for design monies next year and hopefully construction monies the following year. Did rank high with the clean water SRF, almost a million dollars. Not to say that there might not be some other funding mechanisms that the town can get creative for as maybe people buy into our system. So, you know, we're able to deal with what we have now. Maybe there's ways, mechanisms that people can help fund this to expand. But the $200,000 this year, I'm working with a consultant to expand our knowledge of our sewer capacity so that we actually will know, our town is divided into maybe eight to 10 sewer sheds. And we've had studies that kind of have told us what we had, but they're almost 10, 12 years old now. So I'm hoping that this next study will tell me how much capacity we have left in each of those basins. So as we try to expand, I basically have a spreadsheet that I'm just deducting and to know what we can fit. So this is the first project in this. I may have to go further up this cross country line and it is a total of 12,000 feet long. So as we, as we fix this section, I'll be able to move forward with inspection on other sections. Hopefully it's not in the condition that we had downtown five years ago. So any questions on that?
Questions? When improvements happen and things in the Stratum Industrial Park, which we service, do we benefit from any sewer fees or, and they must get water sewer bills from us?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So they're in the game, so to speak.
They're in the game.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, definitely. We are collecting what we need to collect.
Yeah.
It's just to be able to take the extra flow that they may want to send our way.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that downstream can handle it.
And just to be clear, I mean, those rates that we generate from that industrial park help to subsidize the rest of the system.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
So their rates are higher? No.
No.
They have the same rates. All, all our customers, residential or commercial, have the same rates.
But the, the bulk of the use.
Is in a third tier.
Is so high there that it subsidizes residential users to some degree.
Yeah. I mean, you got some big companies up there using a lot of.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
My next project, again, due to expansion and also due to age on this one more, Court Street Pump Station is down there by the skate park on Court Street. This, this pump station actually can pump in two different ways. It can pump either up, up Court, uh, Court Street and get into the Pine Street area, or right now, as it currently is, it pumps all the way around to this same area as the first project and comes into that manhole where everything collapsed. So this project, trying to think a little bit further down the road and, and maybe being able to shed some of the sewer in certain areas or as expansion is happening in one area, maybe I can send the sewer in a different area. This project, one, would replace the building, aging pumps, pumps to the point where have no parts on the shelf, they're machined and built as I need them, which is very, it's not a good feeling when a pump goes down and you're left with two. So this would upgrade the building and the pumps, and it would also improve the force main, upgrade the force mains so that in times where we need to shed the sewer or maybe move the sewer in a different place, or permanently move it in a different place to where gravity can flow in a different way towards main station. This is what that project is dealing with. We do have some larger mobile home communities that flow to this park. They have their own eye and eye situations that I believe they're trying to rectify. I've been trying to work with them and in hopes that they can rectify some of their problems, which would then alleviate some of our problems. But you know how money goes, sometimes they can't move faster than we might have to. So this is just trying to get out in front of a, a situation before it gets bad. And as you see, it ranks 68. There is potential for some principal forgiveness on this one also.
Okay.
Okay. So we have groundwater development. My apologies, my sheet is, is messed up. The top says 5.509. I didn't transcribe my numbers properly. The number is 5.9. And what I did here was combine two projects that I was potentially had them separated. So I apologize for that. But what, what we're having here is groundwater development. This is a continuation of what we've already been successively doing. And we are currently drilling, we are currently have drilled a testing well on a site and are currently determining whether it will have the proper gallons per minute to become a production well and become our next well here in town to give us four, four wells. It will help fully outfit our groundwater treatment plant. We felt this was the reason why we went towards the well before the surface water treatment plant, which you're going to hear about unfortunately. But this way we could outfit our groundwater treatment plant, expand it with a fourth well. And it will give us more capacity so that as you have seen this river, as of late, it is turned into a creek and it is becoming very difficult to treat and we can't even draw in as much as we want to anymore due to the fact that the river level is down.
I know.
So we are trying to supplement our groundwater and our surface water. Our operators are doing a fantastic job trying to maintain the integrity of the groundwater, not to exhaust them and, and create problems with them. So this project is to continue with that. That could be potentially land acquisition, building a building, creating the piping that is necessary to pipe this potential well site over to our groundwater plant. So there would be a little bit of construction, there'd be some negotiating with the, with the, it's not a town owned parcel at this time. So we'd have to negotiate where we are at. I'm just being a little vague, just be, just so I can keep it vague. So I apologize for that. And the other portion to this is the big workhorse well that we currently have, it's the one that has been doing a lot of the work is Larry Lane Well. The building is in very bad repair. As the groundwater treatment plant got built, that really just got a facelift, you know, smeared some cement over it, painted it, made, got some new electrical and a new pump, but it really didn't help the integrity of the building. Well, the, the block building is now breaking and spalling off the, off of the ceiling in the basement. So as, as we move forward with the groundwater treatment plan, I thought maybe it was a good idea to upgrade that. The piping from one of these, from this potential new site may come right by that, that plant. So it might be a good opportunity to take care of them both at the same time. And that, that is, that is the project.
Questions?
Good.
Okay. Can't finish yet, huh?
So this one, I, this is the new surface water treatment fix. So we threw this in, last year, we, we put in a SRF funding. They granted us $2 million, but we were not in a particular position. We were going groundwater. So we kind of let that money go. But in light of what I'm hearing with expansion and all, this is now kind of come back. You see, again, the river is low. Well, as it's low, it becomes even more difficult to treat. Our current facility, where you see that blue triangle, still has 1886 stamped on the front of the building. So there's been some additions and some new processes, but as the treatment world becomes more difficult, there, there is disinfection byproducts where we moved to monocloramines a few years ago, if you remember that, that's been working out well. The manganese limit is now going to be reduced. I don't think we have any issues currently, but as, you know, our treatment plant degrades, it, it becomes more difficult. And then you've heard of per, per floral alkali compounds, the new PFOS, PFOA, the forever chemicals. So again, we don't have any issues, but they do come from the airborne, they come from all over. So we just want to be ready for any of these new emerging contaminants. Again, it's more for size and as we try to expand, I'd like to be able to make sure that our town has the best water capacity and quality that it could have. So, and here you can see, we pulled one, one year, 2019, this was pulled and I can see right through the metal. This is a backwash pump. So this is something that's trying to backwash our filters down there and it's pulling water from our clear well. And so these, and then two years later, the other one went.
Do we have an opportunity to get that $2 million again?
Uh, we're, we're ranked at 59, so I, I hope so. But I don't, I seem to have slipped down the ranking since I gave it back once. I will be honest with you with that, I was ranked higher last year. And I know this is a big lift and, and, and the timing of it all. Again, as Paul said, with the major funding that is out there, just trying to see what is available to us. Do you want me to talk about even? Okay. And I'm going to pass this over to our maintenance superintendent, Jeff Becker.
Thank you very much. So, Laimoni.
Predominantly talking about Public Works Fleet now with these vehicles. A lot of these vehicles, it's pretty much the same story that the fire chief already went over with you, is getting new vehicles, having vehicles pushed back constantly. We had a study done some years ago, then had that study upgraded for vehicle replacement. And we're still constantly pushing vehicles back. But this particular vehicle is the custodian's vehicle. And this was just to purchase a new van. This funding was already approved by the select board and already in the budget pre-COVID and it was cut out of the budget because of COVID financial situations. So that's that one. This vehicle, daily use, every day, somebody is in this vehicle. It's one of the highway department's number one vehicles. It has more than that 99,000 miles on it right now. It's tipping somewhere over 100K. And I want to say that that bed, that picture makes the bed of that truck look real good. It does not, it does not look as good as that picture. That's one of those things that, you know, vehicle looks better when it's wet, so you take the picture when it's wet. That vehicle is in really rough shape. We've repaired the floor of that vehicle. And although the running gear is good and it's safe and passes inspection, it needs replacement because it's a frontline vehicle and it runs pretty much 24/7. It's their on-call vehicle, so it leaves the building all the time. That one sits outside a lot too, because it gets used constantly. And that vehicle will be upgraded in that cost there to a slightly larger vehicle, more vocationally specific. Just go ahead, Paul. This truck has been around, as you can see, 2008, for a long time. It was the water department's, it got transferred, water department got a new truck because they had funding available to help out with the town funds. So we moved the water department's truck that had fewer hours on it over to the highway department so that we could trade a truck that was in much worse condition at the highway department a few years ago. We found with a lot of the new, a lot of the new developments in town are smaller developments. It's harder for the larger trucks to get around in those developments and properly remove the snow and treat the roads. So this will be changed to a smaller truck. To replace this with a truck, just like what you're seeing there, would be twice that amount of money, twice that. It would be a little bit, right now, the way that things are in supply chain, probably be closer to 165K. So by downsizing the truck a little bit and having an all wheel drive, you get more, that vehicle would be more useful all year long. It wouldn't just sit in the garage if it wasn't on a specific job and wouldn't be just for plowing, you know? So that gives us multi-use, more vocationally specific vehicle for that too. Go ahead, Paul. This vehicle, these particular rigs are very nice and we have one that's a 2005. This one is 30, 31 years old this year, 31 years old. And we actually have three of these that are all about the same age. So we have one of them as a parts vehicle now because a lot of the parts aren't available. So I have one of them up on blocks in the shop and we've been robbing parts off of it. All the common stuff is well beyond gone. So, but it still has a good drivetrain, so, but none of that stuff will go. But these vehicles need to be replaced because now the newer model of this is more of a four season tractor. It's more of a four season rig than these ones were because there are many more attachments available for them. The one that we have, the newest one we have is a 2005 and it's really getting a lot of use. And with that use, it gets a lot of abuse because we can't put all of the attachments that we have for that vehicle on the other two that we have. That, you know, only a few attachments will go on the older vehicles because they just don't have the equipment upgrades that the newer models do. And like I said, the newest one we have is a 2005. And these are primarily for winter snow removal on the sidewalks in town. And you know, in the wintertime, we always hear about the sidewalks and the sidewalks not being plowed properly and being icy. That's a big hot button issue for us at DPW. Jay can talk to you about that, he loves those phone calls. But this, these vehicles need to be replaced. We cannot salvage them any longer. We can't just keep patching them up and putting them out on the road. Go ahead, Paul. This is a first response vehicle for all of the things, all of those lines in town, everything that Matt just talked to you about, all those tens of millions of dollars worth of substructure and everything that serves the town. This vehicle has to run all the time to maintain all of those lines. This not only clears our drain lines, but it also, its, its main function is the sewers in town. A lot of towns with the lane mile of pipe that we have in the ground right now have two of these so that they always have a backup. Cause if we have to call somebody, a company to come in with one of these trucks, it costs a lot of money and Jay and, and we, we have some community support from a couple of the local communities that have them. We will help them if they have an emergency and their trucks are down, so they help, in turn, will help us. But at the same time, this vehicle needs to be kept in a high, high. But at the same time, this vehicle needs to be kept in a high, high, um, state of repair, so that it, it doesn't suffer. And it, when it gets used, it gets used. Everything we own goes out to, um, a hot lunch every time it leaves the yard. So, and this vehicle is one of those.
I will say, uh, we got a quote to do 12 miles for us from an outside contractor, and it was $112,000.
It's 20% of the cost of the vehicle.
Yeah. So, it's, and I will say, I just wanna float the idea to everybody in the room, including Dave and Melissa, that we're thinking about, this vehicle's been kept in really good condition. We've done a lot with operator training, we've really hammered that home in the shop to the guys. Anytime they have a problem with it, we talk to them about it. It's the second one that we've had of this particular style with the, with this particular vendor. And their, um, uh, their training, their operator training program is second to none. So, we've had them in to train the operators a few times, and it's made a difference in the condition of the vehicle. And from what I just discussed briefly there was, uh, just touched on, was we will, we may be looking to main, to keep this in our fleet and add a new one, rather than trade this one in. 'Cause you see that purchase value, and we didn't pay a whole lot less than that for this, this truck when we bought it. And, um, they only wanna give us like 65 or 70,000 dollars for the truck. And the last one that we sold outright to bid went for...
75?
Yeah. Yeah.
The previous one was 380.
Yep. So, it probably would be a great idea for us to keep that truck in our fleet as a backup vehicle. It would get less hours, less miles, but I just wanna let everybody know right now that we're gonna be talking about that in the near future. We won't be turning this over, because we'll get peanuts for it, and it's worth way more than what there, anybody's gonna give us for it as a backup vehicle for us.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. That's all.
You all set? Alright, so I'm up. I, you've seen all these before, except there's, there's one, but I'll recap them all briefly. The, uh, first one, that, well, it was in before, several years ago, uh, but it's on page seven. It's the ADA Capital Reserve Fund. And if you remember back in, I think it's 2018, I was doing, uh, municipal audit with some grant work, and, and noted that we, that we didn't have a, an evaluation and transition plan for ADA accessibility, which is required by federal law. And it could affect, well, A, it could affect our, you know, status to receive grant funding, but also it's a really good idea to have one of these. And what it is, is you evaluate your town spaces and your buildings and your facilities, and you come up, you evaluate them, and you identify, uh, this access, uh, issues. Um, and, and then you do what's called a transition plan, how are you going to get to compliance? Uh, so that's what the law requires, and it stops there. You don't necessarily have to implement things, you just have to have an evaluation and transition plan. So, I put forward a warrant article back, I think in 2018, that was passed, uh, 2018, 2019, uh, that passed to fund, uh, an evaluation and transition plan for ADA accessibility. And, uh, initially, we proposed that as a capital reserve fund, but that was removed, and it was just a, it was just, uh, annual funding for, for the study. So, we did it, and we've had the study, and then, uh, COVID kinda hit and kinda took things off. But then the facilities advisory committee has taken a particular interest in implementing the recommendations in this plan, that are pretty quite extensive. But there's a lot of low-hanging fruit, you know, this is, you know, the, you know, door handles, you know, handrails and so forth. And DPW has been doing some things. There's a handrail right over here that you can see as you walk up that, uh, flight to the second mezzanine there. Uh, there's a handrail there. So, they've been making some small improvements, but there are some bigger improvements in there as well. So, the town manager and I felt there's probably best to, uh, recommend again the establishment of capital reserve fund, uh, and the facilities advisory committee does support it, 'cause they're looking to start implementing these projects and prioritize and implement them that are in the plan. So, we're moving forward to 2023, and we're asking for 50,000 for, uh, to seed money to fund, to start funding these improvements. Any questions on that?
Questions?
Could, could they apply to like, like playgrounds too, and stuff like that, like the stuff that Greg was talking about?
Yeah, anything that's been identified in the evaluation plan. And the evaluation plan did, I don't have it in front of me, but they did do all the parks.
Okay.
So, any of the ADA issues they identified in our public parks are, you know, ripe for this type of funding.
Okay, okay. Good question.
The next one is on, next page, on page eight, Complete Streets Study. Won't spend a lot of time on this, this has been in there for quite a long time. Uh, it's programmed for 2024. Initially, there was the Bike and Ped Master Plan. Well, it was the Parking and Traffic Bike and Ped Master Plan, and then Complete Streets, kinda in that order. But then the parking plan kinda got kicked out and, and put on the back. So, it was the Ped Plan, Complete Streets, and the, uh, traffic. But then, the Bike and Master, uh, the Bike and Ped Master Plan was approved by the voters last March and is underway. So, that study is, you don't see it in here anymore, so I'm happy to report that it's being completely conducted as we speak. But then this board, there was a lot of talk, recent, uh, trips to the ZBA, some, some new housing going in downtown, and parking was a particular focus on where the folks are gonna park, particularly during a winter ban.
Yes.
And this board recommended, you know, moving the traffic, uh, and pedestrian flow study of the downtown onto the 2023 warrant, instead of the 2024 that was scheduled. And frankly, I wouldn't, I would, you know, definitely don't disagree with that. So, we're moving that, uh, so the Complete Streets is there. The downtown traffic, parking, and pedestrian, it's, it's gonna look at traffic, parking, downtown, pedestrian flow, pedestrian access, and kinda come up, the goal is to come up with a traffic and parking management plan, uh, which could result, you know, numerous, probably numerous recommendations on, you know, uh, parking management, how to manage the parking. Because based on what I've done and data I've collected and utilization rates of the various, uh, on-street and municipal lot parking, that we probably are in need of some parking management. What those, what those solutions are, well, we'll see. But, uh, we, but also, we have probably a lot of parking that's underutilized, but we don't manage it. There's no time, you know, we don't enforce, uh, hourly parking, uh, you know, there's, there's not, there's, some places where you don't see a lot of turnover, you see people park there, uh, you know, and, and some places, especially around economic, you know, businesses, economic centers, you want those to turn over, you want, and it's better for the businesses and so forth. So, that's kinda the goal of that. Any questions on the Bike and Ped Plan or the Complete Streets? I kinda jumbled them together, but...
So, just to be clear, the downtown parking and, and traffic flow is gonna be 2023, and Complete Streets is 2024?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. It was the opposite, then I switched them, because this board, uh, recommended that, I don't know, a couple months ago, during a, during a project where parking was, you know, yet another project. We've had a couple, uh, units added, you know, eight units over at the old Ioka, 11 units over here in the, in the theater, and these places have zero parking, they have no onsite parking available.
But just to be clear, you're adding great value to the tax rolls with these projects, correct?
Oh, yeah, I, I...
They're home runs in terms of tax impact.
Yeah, I said that at the planning board, I said, you know, this is, these are the kinda projects where you're adding a lot of value, but you're not adding one foot of sewer line, one foot of drain line, one foot of sidewalk, one foot of roadway. And you know just, I mean, perfectly, perfectly well, uh, anybody who watched this presentation knows how expensive infrastructure can be to maintain and rehab and rehabilitate. And the more users you have on the same system, the cheaper it is for each individual payer. I mean, that's just, you know, it's just common sense, so. So, definitely champion development that is, you know, I mean, that's, doesn't increase any impervious surface area. The church just adds, you know, uh, probably, you know, up to, you know, several million dollars worth of value.
Yeah.
Uh, but no, and just participates in the existing infrastructure.
And it also, and it also creates a, a wider base of sewer and water users as well.
Correct, yeah.
Which is another home run.
Exactly, yes, without adding any pipe that, you know, and, uh, so when that pipe that, you know, needs to be replaced, there's more users to pay for it, so it's less burden on each individual.
Density is an economic win for the taxpayers and the taxpayers.
Correct, yes, that's, I buy into that theory as well. I mean, it's not even, yeah, it's...
So, if I could just add, just to make sure, um, 'cause at the select board, we talked about it too. It's, this is to be proactive, to make sure during our winter ban, we, ban, we have adequate parking for our current residents and our new ones to come.
Right. No, it's great.
Yes, I don't think law, you know, the, yeah, it's just, I think management of certain parts. We have, I think there's plenty of parking out there at this point. I mean, I don't see any, you know, 100% utilization rates. I mean, sometimes in this lot, uh, but, you know, once you get into about 85% utilization rates, you wanna start, you, you really have to start to manage your parking.
Yeah, it was more the winter.
Cause you're gonna have isolated issues. Do we have an overall tra, parking issue? No, but do we have isolated parking problems? I, I think we do, in the downtown. So, once you get over 85%, like I said, you should have a parking management plan. The final thing, I...
Can I, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Before we move on from these part, these, um, planning studies, I'm just, I have a quick question. So, like, you know, the, the three planning studies, I kind of see them as, they, they could all sort of inform each other, and I guess I'm just wondering if you're thinking of them in that way too? Like, the Bike and Ped is happening, but, you know, really that, I feel like can contribute or inform the, the pedestrian flow downtown, which is part of the parking one, which, again, the Complete Streets is also gonna inform all of that. So, I just wanna make sure that they're, you know, the, the studies are sort of talking to each other, and whoever's doing the next study will be looking back and...
Yeah, I, just like anything, like the current project with the public safety, we provided them the 2001, the 2007, the 2020 study, that inform everything that they do. So, I would expect this to be the same. There is a little bit of overlap, but they are, you know, the scope of the work, whatever this does, the scope of the work of that study doesn't need to maybe dup, won't duplicate efforts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I agree, yeah, they, they need to be, and I, I'm, I'm involved in all three, so I will, I will make sure of that. Is that all? Okay, and, uh, you'll see that I put in the master plan update for 2028, which will be 10 years, uh, which may or may not move forward, because I started to do an analysis on the master plan, and there's 67 specific action items listed in the action agenda. And out of those 67, 12 have been completed and 40 are being worked on, and 14 have not started. So, the overwhelming majority of those 67, uh, are either being worked on or completed. And most of those 40 that are, I identify as being worked on, don't have a completion. They say just continue to provide, you know, wraparound child and, you know, food options for, you know, for, for meetings. Well, we've done that, we're doing it, but it's not, you know, it's never gonna be completed. So, a lot of those 40, you could argue, probably maybe half of those 40, you could argue, are completed as long as we keep, we keep doing them. So, the, the master plan, I was pretty, I was pretty happy to see that, you know, when I broke that, and I'll provide that analysis to the planning board once done in the next couple of months. But, uh, just a breakdown of all the things, I think. So, so I was like, ooh, we gotta put that in the CIP, because we need, we need, we need another list, um, to start working on, because we've been doing a lot of it.
Yeah.
And then, not to do with me, but page 11, uh, uh, 'cause I, I said I'd cover it for Kristen Murphy. I mean, technically, it's related to me, but the, uh, Kristen Murphy, our Conservation and Sustainability Planner, has continued, nothing you haven't seen before, but has continued the Conservation Fund...
Yep.
...appropriation, and has requested an additional 50,000. I believe it's a, there's 150,000 approximately in there right now, maybe a little, you know, with interest and stuff, right around 150. So, this would bring it up to 200, which is starting to get to the point of where it's, provide a decent match to actually get in potential talks if, if they find a parcel, if they identify a parcel for conservation purposes. So, we're starting to get there, uh, that we could actually, you know, start to be serious about potential, you know, conservation if, if, uh, in, in some critical areas.
Dave, do we have a handle on current use property going into development? And what that, actually, that's what income comes from. Uh, I've got a piece of property...
Yeah, we, we know all the, where the conditional use properties are.
So, yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm just interested how that, if that's any close to 50,000? Or, I...
You said, did you say current use?
That, the property's in current use. And I'll, like, Ray Farm, you know, as an example.
Yeah.
When that happens, it has, they have to pay a fee, I don't know if it's back taxes or what it is.
Yeah, it's a, it's a penalty, it's a, it's a current use penalty, because the goal behind current use is to put it in for, well, the intent of the law was to put it in to preserve it for agricultural, you know, uses and, you know, conservation and habitat. But sometimes it gets used by people, they just, developers will put it in current use, and until it gets developed, and then they'll, so you pay, you know, very minimal taxes on it.
Right.
Uh, but then, once you develop it, they do have a current use penalty. It doesn't usually add up even close to the taxes that would have been assessed...
Right.
...over the years, depending on how many years you have, and if it's a short timeframe, maybe, but...
But some towns, that goes to conservation.
Yeah, that's, I don't believe we've designated that.
If what we appropriate is anywhere near what we're earning.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. No, I don't know the current use penalties. I know one's coming out pretty soon, that can vary quite considerably.
Oh, it's got...
Yeah, depending on, you know, some years, it's nothing, because nobody pulls a property out of current use. But then somebody pulls a big property out of current use, and it's a big influx. But we don't do, oh, now I know what you're saying, we don't do that.
Yeah.
We don't have that.
We always appropriate this way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've done that on our, we do that on our own, through, through this mechanism.
Yep.
Any questions? Alright, without that, I'll further ado, I'll have Melissa Roy come up to explain, uh, the financial schedules.
Okay, thank you for your patience. You know more than you knew when you came in here.
No worries.
Unless you were napping.
Thank you for having us. Uh, Russ couldn't be here tonight, he's had a death in his family, so please excuse us. I'll be really quick, um, just to review, a lot of what I was gonna talk about is already been discussed with the various department heads. Um, we had a really successful town warrant, uh, all of our capital improvement warrants, except for one, passed. Um, the one that didn't pass was the 50,000 dollars for the DPW garage, which they're going to be reinventing and presenting for this year. Um, to bring you up to date, uh, we did some borrowing for 10 Hampton Road for groundwater, um, for 2.25 million, and we got a true interest rate of 2.63, which is fantastic. Um, we did our lease purchases for around 964,000 with an interest rate of 3%. We were able to secure a fairly significant amount of alternative funding this year. We heard from the state aid grant, which was supposed to, when we built our wastewater treatment plant, originally, we expected about 18 million dollars over the course of the state aid program. Um, right around the time that our plant was built, they stopped that program. So, they are reinstating it, and we expect for this FY22 to, uh, receive about 92,000, and for FY23, uh, I think it's 1.2 million. Um, so we expect that state aid grant, hopefully, fingers crossed, that they don't shut it down again. Uh, if they, if it runs the, the length of the program, it would be 18 million dollars to offset the wastewater treatment plant, so that's very exciting news. We received our second tranche of ARPA funding, so the town has now received 1.6 million dollars in ARPA funding. At this point, 836,000 has been designated to pay for other various projects, and there's about 736,000 dollars left for other projects, and that is deemed through the select board process. We also heard that the state is going to allow for a one-time, um, relief of the pension program. So, the state had always chipped in towards the pension program, and a few years... And a few years back, that stopped. For FY23, they're going to, for police and fire, instead of fourteen percent, there's going to be seven and a half percent. So we expect to see a little bit of savings there, which is exciting news. Webster Ave Pump Station, which was one of the bond, excuse me, one of the warrant articles. The total project cost on the warrant was 5.7 million. We were able to successfully secure 1.05 million from congressional directed spending through Senator Shaheen's office. We were also able to secure 1.395 million from the state ARPA grant and 325,000 in state loan forgiveness. So out of a 5.7 million dollar project, we expect the town will only need to cover 2.93 million. So we are really hustling in some of this infrastructure money to bring it back to Exeter. For Ten Hampton Road, Greg already went through the grants that we've applied for, and we'll be looking to hear from those. West Side Drive, Paul went over this a little bit. We were able to secure a hundred thousand dollars in state ARPA, a state ARPA grant and twenty-three thousand dollars in state loan forgiveness. And he went over Pit Pocket Dam and Sewer Siphons. Sewer Siphons, just to bring you up to speed, the total project cost is now 2.6 million dollars originally. And I'm going to say the year wrong. Maybe FY20, so I apologize. We had an original appropriation of 1.4 million. We went to do the project, realized there was an emergency under the river, stopped the project and looked for alternative funding. At this point, we've received, or we will be, we were approved for 600,000 dollars for congressional directed spending from Congressman Pappas's office. We receive, we will be receiving 180,000 dollars from a state aid grant. And from our 1.6 million that got given directly to Exeter, the select board has approved 420,000 dollars of that money so that the, the additional expense to cover the emergency is, is not going to be hitting the taxpayers for anything additional than the original warrant.
And which project is it?
This is the Sewer Siphons. So we, we worked really hard to try to find alternative funding to deal with the emergency, which could have been about another 1.6 million.
So you saved the taxpayers a significant expense
Yes.
in their water and sewer rates.
Yep. So that is that. You have heard the FY23 proposals. And if you go to page 63, Russ has put together your existing and proposed debt service for 2023 and 28. Excuse me, let me just get there myself here. So you'll be able to scan, I'm not going to go line by line. It is late. I am happy to answer any questions. But you'll see in each page, you'll be able to look at the current projects and where their debt service is. The very final column, you'll be able to see what the last payment is. So for example, on page 63, we expect the last payment of the String Bridge Rehabilitation Project to be paid in FY23. Below, you'll see the projects dated that are being proposed in the CIP. You all know your own packet, but just for those at home that are listening. So we do have a few projects that we'll be rolling off in FY23. String Bridge, Portsmouth Ave Waterline Replacement, Portsmouth Ave Sewer Project out of the Sewer Fund. I thought there was one more, I might not have it with me. So, and then we'll go through that project, the process and budget and select board and anything else. But I'm happy to answer any questions. And if I don't have the answers, I'm happy to get them for you soon.
Questions? Not tonight? Okay.
I know it's late. You guys did a great job.
And just as I say every year, I mean, we provide those financial schedules, you know, just as informational because the Budget Review Committee looks at these warrant articles, makes recommendations on what they feel the town can afford. And they, they look at it because if the planning board just looks at it, they're not seeing the entire budget. You know, the operational, the operating budget is a huge part of it. So the planning board just kind of determines, are these worthy capital projects? Are these something that we want to pursue? And then kind of leave the funding and the timing of that funding to the BRC, who ultimately makes the recommendations to the select board, who ultimately decides what to put on the warrant. And then the voters decide what goes in. So there's enough, you know, folks on that. So the planning board just generally doesn't get involved with, you know, looking at the financial side. But we provide them for your, you know, for your information. And it's part of the document. Basically, moving forward.
Yeah, yeah. Well, good, thank you so much
You're welcome.
for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, now then, we'll have this for, up for public hearing again next time we meet.
Six thirty, August 25th?
Six thirty on the 25th.
We'll have the second public hearing for about, you know.
To give us a little extra time. So six thirty, not seven?
At which time, you know, you can, I, on your behalf, I prepare a transmittal letter from the chair to the select board of the adopted capital improvement program. And the transmittal letter can simply just say, here is the adopted plan, or it can say any recommendation. So the planning board, feel free to, you know, pick out any of the projects that, you know, you might feel rise to the top and is more important, you know, or worth mentioning or something like that. This is your opportunity to kind of comment on the plan if you want to and get it into a transmittal letter to the select board. But that will be discussed on the 25th.
Okay.
Thank you for mentioning six thirty, so I could update my calendar.
Anyone who watches tonight can come at six thirty. If they heard anything they'd like to comment or provide input on tonight, then that's their opportunity is six thirty on the 25th. August 25th.
Okay, Town Planner Adams, any field modifications, Dave?
No field modifications. But I did have a letter of credit reduction. PA Dorm, the dorm site on Front, on Front Street, they've, they asked for a reduction of their erosion control bond. It was 45,000. They asked for a 20,000 reduction down to 25. I went out to the site, I determined that a lot of it, all the stormwater drainage is underground, stormwater drainage, and the porous pavement sidewalks and the rain gardens are installed and functioning as designed. And a building takes up a lot of the disturbed area that's calculated to use, you know, to go in and stabilize the site. So between the buildings and the impervious surface area and the infrastructure, I granted that reduction down to 20,000, 25,000. And that's all.
All right, any announcements?
I got master plan, just real quick, the rezoning effort that I've been talking about. And it's kind of a, it's, it's a, when we get into it, it's a pretty in-depth regulatory audit that's needed because you really, when you, when you adopt, when you do any proposed language, you've got to comb through any existing that's going to remain, and you got to make sure there's no conflicts. You know, even though the stricter shell control, you get that language in there, but you don't want any conflict. So it's, so I just, I became aware of an Invest New Hampshire grant opportunity. And I, and there's no match requirement. And actually, it opened Friday night, the application. I started on it Monday morning, and I actually submitted it yesterday for 45,000 dollars to, to continue with Horsley-Witten Group to complete this in a more robust manner. So hopefully, I'll hear pretty soon that it was really attractive because it's a quick turnaround. It's from the infrastructure bill funding. And it's for just exactly this type of, this type of initiative. So, so hopefully, I'll know pretty soon, and then the money is available almost immediately. So, well, because I was getting a little worried about being able to get all this done for potential March 23 warrant due to the, kind of when I get into it, the weed, there's a lot of weeds. So hopefully, I'll have help soon with Horsley-Witten and some funding from, through Plan New Hampshire. That's all.
Great, good news. Thank you. John, would you have a motion by any chance?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And again, for the department heads coming in this evening.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.